Socks again.
Okay, it's ten oh three this morning. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody to the, let's see, April the twenty-fifth already. Meeting of the Planning Commission for Dennyson. It's our custom that we will begin our meeting this morning with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would care to join us, will please stand at this time. Father, we come to you today, we thank you for this day, that you give us another opportunity to come together to conduct the business of our city. Father, we pray that you would bless the time we were here together, bless this meeting, and things would be accomplished. And we give you the praise, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the prayers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little housekeeping before we proceed into our meeting this morning. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. Outside the decision we make on plats and site plans, all other decisions will be passed on to City Council for final approval. Today's decisions will be on the City Council's agenda for the next, what's the next meeting?
May first.
May first, okay. So, those decisions we make today will be passed on to them for final approval on May first. I think most of what we're doing this morning is public hearings. So, we're gonna give you the opportunity to come forward and ask that you would give us your name and your address for the record. We're not gonna impose time limits today, we don't have enough folks present for that, so we'll give you the opportunity to come and speak either on behalf or in opposition to the particular request. Our first order of business this morning is going to be our consent agenda. Are there any errors, omissions, corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second? I have a motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to item four, our public hearings. Item four A, Ms. York.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for a right-of-way abandonment for a portion of land being a part of the Jay Streper survey, abstract number eleven fifty-six, also identified as the seventy feet of public right-of-way of Memorial Drive as shown by deed of record in volume nineteen twenty-one, page five three nine of deed records of Grayson County, Texas, case number twenty-two-three dash zero three four, R O W. The images that are depicted, on the left, the yellow is the right, it's an approximate outline of the right-of-way that is being requested to be abandoned. And in the blue to your right is the overall property that the applicant owns outside of the right-of-way that's in the middle of their property. This particular location came through for a rezone December of twenty-twenty-one for multifamily two, and that was approved by council at their meeting held in that month. It was implied at that time that there was a possibility of the right-of-way abandonment or the pursuant of a right-of-way abandonment for that portion of Memorial Drive would come through, and that is where this applicant stems from, or this application stems from. This is the survey that was provided of the right-of-way. Sorry, it totals about one point six one-three acres. This, now let me clarify, this was a part of the original rezoning case. So, this was their concept plan or preliminary site plan that they provided as a backup document for their rezone request. This, excuse me, this applicant or this development has not pursued any other applications. So, the reason why this was a part of this application was just to kind of show you their reasoning behind requesting the right-of-way abandonment. As you can see, on the northern portion of this site plan, they are looking to construct apartment buildings on what is currently now Memorial Drive. This could easily change in the future whenever those applications are submitted. It's possible that the number of units you're seeing, which is, which is less than what the zoning ordinance for this zoning district allows, it's possible it can be even less. And it's possible with the topography over there that the units that are depicted at any portion or on any portion of the property could not exist. So, I just, I wanted to make sure that you knew that this was not an active application. This was just a part of their rezoning request, and it was also a document that they provided with their right-of-way abandonment request. Just a couple of things to note. There are current utilities in the right-of-way, and Public Works has made the applicant aware that the developer will be responsible for relocating those services and providing any necessary easements to ensure that the services that are provided to individuals currently on those lines will not be impacted. There are also properties, excuse me, let me go back a little bit. There are medical offices to the north and to the south that are serviced by Memorial Drive. They do have access to State Highway ninety-one as well as Martin Luther King Street, and the fire marshal has taken a look at this preliminary site plan, let me just make that clear. And they are, they haven't presented any, provided us with any issues at the moment. The applicant has also provided an appraisal of the property that they are requesting to be abandoned, and it totaled, bear with me, thirty-five thousand dollars. And per section twenty-one dash eighty-four of the Code of Ordinances, City of Denison Code of Ordinances, they are to provide us those funds for us to deposit and keep if the right-of-way is approved by City Council or to refund if it is denied. And staff is, has made receipt of those payments. With that, staff does recommend approval of the right-of-way abandonment request. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Any questions, staff?
Will the utilities and the existing businesses be impacted at this time?
So, they, that will be, Public Works will be overseeing all of that. However, they have made the developer aware that they cannot impact those, those that are currently being serviced. They will need to, if relocating lines are necessary, then they will need to do that at their own expense and to ensure that services are still provided. As well as if they keep those services where they are to provide us with easement so that we can to rearrange whatever they need to rearrange with their development so that we have access to those utilities.
Okay, let's talk about the location of existing businesses that are on Memorial that would be impacted by this.
That, that's what I, why I was asking, the dentist office is up here.
So, what am I looking at when I see property twenty-five, twenty-nine, fifty-one? And twenty-five, twenty-nine, fifty, there's buildings right there. What are those buildings?
I'm not familiar with what the offices are. I think the, I think what their medical offices, I could be wrong. Those are medical offices, and then on the northern portion of Memorial Drive, there are medical offices as where, as well, dentist offices and offices of that nature.
I, I guess my question is, is the portions of Memorial that are going to remain would ensure access to those, to those businesses without any?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
The developers indicated in other discussions, they'll be required to build those accesses just like any development through the development, right, to make sure that they have the proper amount of access for the number of, for the amount of density. So, what we're looking at today has nothing, we're not talking about the inner workings, right? We don't see that yet. So, we're just strictly looking at that portion of Memorial.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Frank May of, I'm a, of FDM Equities, but also a fifty percent partner. My address is twenty-one zero nine Juma Drive in Sherman, Texas. I'm a fifty percent partner under Kingdom Road Equities. As you know, this has been a long and arduous process cleaning up this property over the past two and a half, three years. Originally, it was eight plats. We've got it down to four plats. The title problems, we originally hired Robert Minshew to handle all the title problems, and finally, he just threw his arms up and gave up because it was just, it was incredible amount of work. It took us about almost a year just to clean up the title problems on this property. And then eventually, as you know, we've got it zoned for multifamily twenty, approximately four hundred ninety-three units. So, the reason why we want the right-of-way is to incorporate that north track, which is the parking lot, and make it contiguous because we see an opportunity there to kind of build like a small community center along with the swimming pool to overlook Munson Park, but also maybe continuing that walking path and bring that walking path down into the, the foliage area, which is another two acres. However, the property is too steep to build anything, but we haven't really done a study to provide a, a walking path to work with the Munson family on the, on the park itself. Now, the, the closure of the right-of-way will not impact any of the owners south of the Memorial Drive of the, where the yellow line is, and also to the, I would refer to that to the northwest side of Memorial Drive. That is a very, the traffic on that road, we haven't done a traffic study, but I, I, you know, I'm usually there quite a bit, but I haven't seen any cars actually travel through there. Most people usually just take ninety-one and go around and, and to enter into downtown Denison. They usually don't cut through Memorial Drive to get back onto Highway ninety-one. Secondly, this, this development project potentially, you know, is somewhere between a seventy-five and ninety million dollar project. That would be an incredible asset to downtown Denison as the downtown grows with this new evolution of this fifty-four million dollar redevelopment plan for downtown Denison. And thank you for your time.
Any questions of the applicant?
I noticed that Denison had, when we transitioned with the new trash cans, that I was obliged to thank for the, being able to move those there and then during that time of transition. I took Memorial Drive often to Lake Point Nursing Home recently and don't have to do that anymore.
Right.
But there's a lot of memories, you know, back in there in those walking trails, and I appreciate the thought of possibly making that a?
Sure. So, the two, so the two properties, those two white buildings that you see at the northeast corner?
Yes.
Of Memorial, I can't recall the entity, but I believe it might be part of UHS Texoma or some state entity. They contacted me last year and offered those two properties to me, to our group, to Kingdom Road Equities. But we never really could agree on pricing, but I, I just noticed over the weekend that the building there on the hard corner does not have the number of occupants that it used to be. I believe it might be vacant. I don't know that. The building at the northwest corner of Memorial and ninety-one is an abandoned building, and we, at some point, we tried to buy that building so we could incorporate that into the overall development and make it, you know, make it a very nice development.
That was my next question. So, we're talking about the one that appears to have a white roof on the west side?
Yes, so, that would be, that property is owned by Ms. George, who's here in the room. So, if you look at the two white buildings at the northeast corner of Memorial and Tone, that would be directly across the street. It looks like a, a triangle piece of property there. Do you see that?
So, are you, you're talking down by Martin Luther King?
Yes.
I'm asking about the one?
On the north side.
On the north side of?
It looks like a, it looks like a star?
No, 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 it's, it's the property that's just to the east of Reba McIntyre.
I believe that's, I think that's Hickey Dental. I could be wrong, but I know that there's a, the Hickey Dental Center is one of those buildings up there.
Yeah, I believe that bill, okay, that building on the north side that abuts our, our property line, I believe that is vacant as well.
That's what I was thinking, and I, I wondered if you all had purchased that one. That one is not?
No, we have not purchased that. No.
But I just, because when we saw one of the drawings, it looked like there was bleed over onto that property.
Right. So, the, so the abandonment of the right-of-way will stop at the edge of our property line. So, technically, if you wanted to do a gated community for a multifamily project, you would basically have a cul-de-sac on both, on both ends of the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
I'm John Munson at eleven twenty-seven West Morton in Denison, and have been heavily involved in this part of town for a long time. Oh, since the late eighties on the Life Search Project, which put in the Reba McIntyre Lane, put in Life Search Way, did the Wood Creek, did the Lakeview, did the Heritage Apartment Complexes, did the Stone Brook Assisted Living, did the Homestead, nursing home. We sold ten acres to the hospital. A budding that north parking lot and going down the hill, the Reba Ranch was built as a Ronald McDonald-type support facility for patients, families that were in the hospital. And the Rehab Hospital, the Reba Rehab, was built by TMC. It's thirty-five thousand square feet. It's down at the north of this area. And I wanted to kind of update you on some things that are going on, which some of you and some of the city staff are aware of, but?
And I think you can see this drawing here, and I'll try to detail it to you. But this is, this is the Stone Brook, this is the Homestead, the Reba Ranch is now here, and the Reba Rehab is here. This is Reba Ranch, a Reba McIntyre Lane here, and this is Life Search going north. The, this site here is under contract for the Denison Independent School District to build a new fifth and sixth grade. And that is forty-five acres, and eighty-four is along the north. This is the dead end of Armstrong right here. The city closed it, they retained the right-of-way, and the school system is hoping to get Armstrong extended. The immediate problem is Life Search Way is dead ended here. We're immediately going to be doing construction of this, and that's about five to six hundred thousand. But we're looking for maximum circulation this order here. The city's aware of all of this happening, but as to how this road gets built, it may be a joint effort by the city and the school. But the other side of this property is still in the format of seniors housing. In other words, handicapped people may live in the ADA compliant duplex or a mid-rise. Those people can eat even when their loved one might be in the All Family Wing here. They can still come across the street and eat and watch TV, et cetera, with their loved ones. So, that's been the plan all along, and unfortunately, the hospital decided to move unbeknownst to me, but that is what is happening, and obviously, this is all a traffic generator, okay? And some of the bigger problem here is getting from the internal parts of the city up to this school. It, and, and, and this certainly is gonna help, but we're thinking that school children and so forth would rather be on the spine road and on Reba and Memorial to get from the inner city up to this fifth and sixth grade school. So, that's kind of where that's headed, and obviously, this means more density, more traffic. And for the children, I don't know, I haven't met any of the people yet, but they're engineering on the curtains on this, and that's been going on for several months. They've surveyed, they've done their fire metal, they've done their appraisal. And down here, we have the hospital and Memorial, and we have eight properties on Memorial that are all occupied except for the northeast corner, Memorial and MLK. That has recently been sold. The, I manage to, I have ownership in what we call a T and B building, which is right here next to this parking lot. That has three suites occupied, and then we have down on the corner another building about eight thousand square feet. It's the northeast corner of Memorial and Reba, and it's occupied. In, in office suites, we manage that for an owner out of Dallas. And I'd say about eight percent full, and it has everything from counselors to a lady that does home delivery, babies, a midwife, massage therapist, all those types of uses. The nursing home here is quite active even though it was built many years ago. It was a Four Seasons. All of these people depend on access, and obviously, if you look back in history, the reason Memorial is there is because when the hospital bought this land or was donated, and I think it was donated by my hand, El Louise, about twenty-six acres. But guess what? They needed to have, because of their traffic, they needed Memorial, okay? And if you had done, now, the Haiti Hospital, if you recall, banking MLK, they eventually bought that and had a south entry. But the amount of traffic driven by the hospital and its north entry and east entry could not be afforded on MLK. The MLK Hospital and the traffic that exists at Tone and MLK, their decision was to build Memorial and have that as a thoroughfare to serve the entry of most of the hospitals, including the Morrison Office Building. If you recall, the entry into that was off of Memorial.
But John, I, I want a question here. As I'm seeing this, and the question I asked initially was, what's the impact on the existing businesses that are there on Memorial? And how would this impact them? And there is still going to be access, it's just not going all the way through that set. And I think the complete dynamic of that area has changed since the hospital is no longer there. We don't have the necessity for the north entrance of the hospital any longer. So, this is, this is a private area that, that is planning, planning this. As it impacts the development of where the school is, the, the right-of-way dedication doesn't end until you get east of Reba McIntyre. So, I can't see how that, it's gonna change our, our traffic flow down Memorial, down Reba, back over to where they could get to, to the school.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out that a traffic impact study will be required for this type of development. And so, it's, it's possible, and I, when I say possible, it's most likely that there will be other traffic mitigation put in place for this development, and I, I don't see how it couldn't, but those will, we won't know that until plating and until civils. And upgrades to Memorial could also be possible. But because of night, state, ninety-one being a text dot road specifically, that alone triggers the TIA. So, they'll have to, they'll probably have to do some kind of traffic mitigation for the development as it is.
Where is Highway sixty-nine in relation to this?
It's to the east.
That's about down there, that little corner.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's just in here.
Okay.
What about Armstrong?
If I could clarify, the school district, that has no impact on our case right now, correct? The school district will have to go through their own engineering process, and we've already started those discussions on extending other roads and the impact on sixty-nine and ninety-one and all the different roads that they will have to deal. So, as this whole area redevelops, there are many different conversations that have to take place, and those are happening. But today, we are only looking at the abandonment of Memorial as requested.
Well, I understand where it comes from. I just wanted, I didn't know who all the weight that school that this load is entering right on their side. And the fact that there's a huge amount of traffic. But the, the bigger issues, maybe in the real estate business and also their full occupation of the apartments and back. But much like the hospital, they could not rely on just MLK or the path back. So, that's why they put in more, and I would suspect that the amount of traffic that will be involved in these apartments is going to be way up there and very similar to what was in the hospital, which is more traffic than now.
Well, it could be worse than what it was in the hospital because there's more units, but it's like staff says, they're gonna have to do the traffic study. So, what she just said was, in, depending on the outcome of the study, Memorial may be completely rebuilt from the apartment complex down to MLK and from the apartment complex back over to ninety-one. They could have to improve it in order to, to facilitate. They could have to improve it in order to, to facilitate the additional traffic flow.
Well, I think there's going to be so much traffic related to the 450 or 80 apartments that we think were high and we're thinking those apartments are high on the north side of Memorial. Those two streets are going to need to be there to serve the apartments from the north ingressing points as well as the south. And if you close the street, Memorial and good cul-de-sacs on it, I can tell you this, that is definitely going to help hurt the other office buildings up and down the street. Nobody wants to be on a dead-end street, okay? That's poor circulation. So, and most of these folks, I have a fault to the dentist that is between Team and B B, which is Team and B is the white building immediately west of the parking lot that is a part of the Kingdom. Ownership, the dentist is just bought that practice in recent months from Hickey. And the practice is open and operating. The next building to the west is the 78,000 square foot office suite building that we manage. Obviously, the nursing home, they have a good bit of traffic. The next property belongs to an insulation company with their office down on Cruz de Costa, owns that property that's just west of the nursing home. But all of those folks are going to be impacted by being, for example, that if this whole that concept does proceed, all those people are going to be on a essentially a dead-end street.
How many cars a day do you think Memorial Drive creates on a daily basis? How many trips do you think there is on Memorial Drive on a daily basis, John?
I wouldn't have any idea. I know the traffic is dramatic, maybe 10% of what it was when the hospital was there.
Oh, I'm sure it's more than 10%.
Sure, it's like a 1% of what it was.
I mean, I, I can see where, when the hospital left Memorial Drive, it became a ghost town compared to what it was.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying there's, there's 10% or less of what was there when the hospital was operating. And then what I'm also saying is that the apartments will dramatically increase the need to travel Memorial and MLK.
Can we go back to the site plan that was, that was submitted?
Let me just state that this is not the site plan that was submitted. This was the site plan that was a...
But I, I just reflect this as a point. Now, text dots involved in this, so this may or may not happen. But I'm looking at entrances on Memorial, I'm looking at two entrances off of Martin Luther King, and then I'm looking at another entrance off of Memorial up on 91. I think the developer has taken into consideration the number of trips that they're going to create. I think that the, there will be more than just Memorial as their entrance and exit points for this, for this development. I think we're, we're not being accurate.
May I interject, please? There was a traffic study done in November of 2021. Again, this is not set in stone. We are going to have to come back and do some of this again. We are not, I've spoken to the developer, he believes this is too dense. They're not sure how this is going to work. They want to see, they have to build other access points through the development. We're not speaking about that right now. We are only talking about the portion of Memorial, and we need to stay on course with that.
And I agree with you, Mary, but I think what, what, what I'm trying to establish here is the fact that the impact of Memorial is minimal at this point in time.
Correct. I would agree, and that is why staff has recommended approval of the abandonment.
And I, and I said, as I said earlier, one of my questions for staff in the beginning was, what impact is it going to have on the existing businesses and the fact that they can be accessed from Memorial just like they have been since they were established? The dental clinic, I think, was created in 87. And, and there's not going to be a change in that. Now, there may be more traffic generated on those streets, but have I, if I have a business on one of those streets, I don't know that having traffic on it's a bad thing. So, I, I mean, so we've already established that we're not damaging the existing built community around it by what we're, what we're discussing here today. So...
And there will be a new concept plan. Down the road, there will be a new concept plan, not, not the one that's part of this.
Yes, that, so the applicant will have to submit several documents, one of those being a preliminary plat that will come before this body for approval. Final plat, civil engineering plans and a site plan. Now, the site plan, per the ordinance, does not require it to be approved by this body because it doesn't fall into an overlay, but they will have to submit it. It'll be reviewed by staff, including our, our staff, public works, in accordance with whatever our requirements are.
Well, I guess a lot more is just the property to find. I think that's going to make a lot of traffic that will be fed onto MLK and to Memorial, whatever it's listed. There's going to about four hundred meters of abandoned street there. And it won't be a through street for our purposes or for traffic. What do you have other problems? I want to at least mention a couple of other things. Seems to me that with pending traffic increases there, that could represent the apartments primarily, how you could close Memorial, I do not understand. But anyway, I wanted to point out a few things. One, there's an eight-inch water main that was put in along Memorial and a 24-inch from 84 to Armstrong on...
John?
Yeah.
I don't want to be disrespectful, okay? Because you and I are friends. But the utility discussion is not an issue with this street abandonment, okay? Because we know that engineering is going to be involved in that.
I'm just pointing that out, okay?
I understand. But what I'm saying is, it's not an issue with what we're discussing today. So I'm going to ask that we forego that and restrict comments and questions to the, to the abandonment of this road and the impact. That's what we need to discuss because utilities is something that will be handled later on down the line, and you and I both know that. So respectfully, I'm going to ask that you would just bypass that part and let's get back to the abandonment section.
I didn't see any retention basin on the site plan. That may have...
And you know that will be discussed as well.
Yeah.
You cannot do a development without water detention or water retention. We know that. And again, those are all engineering issues that do not have anything to do with what we're talking about today.
Well, anyway, our position is, if Memorial is an important street serving that part of the community, it will often be more important when the apartments are built, which we support. And the, it's going to remain an, an, an issue for the tenants out there and the building owners that I think, from my experience on leasing this property, it's been tough to lease with the hospital gone. Just register my opposition to closing the street.
Dooley, no.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak?
Hi, my name is Diana Shores. I live at 105 Texoma Terrace Road and own the building on the corner, 105 Memorial Drive. And I have no objection to the apartments. I think they'd be a great asset to the city. My objection is, is to the existing businesses, it's the amount of traffic that is going to be coming down the four exits that's going to impede people being able to get to those businesses and get away from those businesses. That's my biggest concern, is the amount of traffic coming out of the apartment. I mean, if you have 498 apartments, what do you got, two cars per apartment roughly? That's a thousand cars traveling that road on four exits. And that's my biggest concern, is the four exits and stopping Memorial Drive to where people can't go through both ways to keep the flow going.
Well, I think that they can go both ways because a certain percentage of those people that are living over on the east side are going to take that, that exit down to Martin Luther King, and those who are living on the northwest side are going to exit out to, to Texoma Parkway or 91. And then there's probably going to be at least one, maybe two more entrances onto MLK coming from the south. Again, we're going to go back to what they said earlier. Before anything is actually approved, as far as site planning, we're going to have a traffic study that's going to tell us, this is what it's going to generate, this is how it's going to impact.
I think that's very important.
We may ask the developer to come back and increase the width of Memorial from, from the complex down to the street. I don't know until we, till we have the studies done. But we, you know, again, as we're discussing today, is the impact that that short span right there that we're talking about is going to have? And my concern going in, as I've said multiple times this morning, is the impact it was going to have on existing businesses not being able to access them. We're not destroying that. We're going to make sure that's, that's...
I'm just worried...
And there are businesses, I think, that are going to actually be on the positive side of what's happening.
I'm just worried about some businesses losing business because there is so much traffic there that they elect to go somewhere else.
Well, I mean...
You, you, you get older people that don't like to drive in congested areas and stuff. You've got the nursing home there, you've got the medical facilities, and they don't choose to drive in those things, so they're going to go somewhere else.
I understand that, but you just said, we are in favor of the apartments. We don't, we think it's an asset for the city, okay?
I just think the, the traffic study is very important.
We have to get them in and out of there, so we have to get them in and out of there.
Right. I think the traffic study is very important, and I think the more exits that can be put in to move that traffic through to not impede those businesses is important.
I understand that, but if we did not abandon that right-of-way, you understand the same amount of traffic is going to use Memorial that it's going to be if we abandon it. That's not going to change the count.
Right, I understand that.
So, again, we haven't really, in my opinion, we haven't really established a real reason why the abandonment of the, of the right-of-way is, is, is that big of a negative on the, on the area.
The only thing I'm thinking is the amount of traffic coming out of the apartments. If the whole of Memorial is there, it can flow more evenly rather than having these apartments all go out this way and these apartments all go out that way. It can be a mishmash.
That, that's a, that's one of those, that's a debate we're not going to be able to resolve today. Because that's left up to the traffic.
That's the only thing I'm, I'm against, is the amount of traffic.
Okay. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak at this point in time? Okay, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes for a vote, okay?
My name is Frank May. I do have a full-blown traffic study impact that was part of the P and Z and City Council approval dated November 17th of 2021. It's 143 pages. I'm happy to send that to Mr. Munson and Ms. Shores as well. The preliminary plat, it was a part of the approval process with the P and Z and City Council, does show the cul-de-sacs.
Mr. May, Mr. May.
And it addresses, excuse me?
I'm sorry, the preliminary plat was not a part of the approval. The only thing that was approved was the zoning. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
But that's, you're probably correct on that.
Yes, sir, I, I am correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. But the traffic study that, that we did, or DeShajo did, shows the preliminary plat with the cul-de-sacs.
Yes, sir.
It's part of their study.
It was part of the, it was part of the zoning exhibit, just to provide council and the commission a little bit more of an idea of what the impact would be to that area when they were rezoning it from office to MF2. I just wanted to clarify that. You can, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to make sure...
No, no, that's okay. And I think for the City Council hearing, we'll, we'll bring DeShajo team in.
Get with, get with Mr. Munson.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Send those to them. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, discussion among the commission. Let me reiterate that it is our objective to look at these cases based on land use, okay? This is not political for us, this is land use.
Just one quick comment, that I've been to doctors at both ends of Memorial, and I never drove the whole thing to get there. I either went in by Armstrong to get to the office that was on the south end, and I always drive 91 to get to the doctor on the north side. So for me personally, the abandonment does not impact the, the situation.
But we're, we're, we're faced with a need for housing in this city. And in your testimony, John, you talked about the development of the new school. That's a, that's an end result of what's coming, what's happening. We don't have adequate housing supply for what we need in this city. So we're going to have to make sacrifices. In some cases, we're going to have to maybe be inconvenienced a little bit in order to create the supply of housing that we're going to need. There's a lot of discussion that's got to be completed before this is a, a done deal. And that's discussion for another case at another time. So I'm, unless we have any other comments from staff or from commission, I'm going to request, ask for a motion.
I move to, I move to recommend approval of the request to abandon a portion of Memorial Drive as presented.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, motion carries. Item 4B.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion.
One, one second, Diane. This is going to be on the May...
May 1st.
First, council meeting.
Bear with me, I just want to verify that I'm on first.
So if, if you want to develop more information, go to council, it will be a public hearing. They will make the final decision on whether or not the right-of-way will be abandoned. Thank y'all for coming.
Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots 1R-1 and 1R-2, block one of the replat of lot one, block one, Gateway Edition, Phase 6, case number 2023-041RP. This is an aerial view of the subject property. It's at the corner of FM 691 and Teresa Drive, and it is zone plan development. It was part of the overall PD for the Gateway Village, and that is the Woodlands Trail facility that you saw right there. This is the proposed replat. The applicant is looking to replat one lot into two to accommodate future medical offices, which is an appropriate use for this specific location of the plan development. They have submitted a site plan, it is currently being reviewed by staff. That site plan will come, come before this body for approval as it is located within a PD.
Is this one that came before us before?
It has come before, I think it came, Mary, don't get me to line, it has come before this body for something, but I do not remember what it was.
There are lots with the name of Gateway, so I think it makes us, we have to be diligent in checking which one.
I didn't visualize the access as...
Sure. I think last meeting, there were, there was a replat and a site plan for property to the west. They are a part of the same addition, and so it can get a little confusing. This particular location, if it has come before you, I can't recall, but it is a part of the same PD, and it is in a similar location. Both lots do have access to... Um, both lots do have access, um, to utilities, water and sewer, um, and they have access to FM six ninety-one and Teresa Drive as well as cross-access to those properties to the west. Um, staff does recommend approval of the proposed replat, and I am present for any questions that you may have.
Any questions to staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, you all want to hear speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in opposition to this request? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I move to propose the proposed replat, second.
I have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed, staff updates?
Um, I believe that both of the, uh, conditional use permits that came before this body, um, were approved by City Council at their last meeting. Do you have any updates?
The, uh, on both of those conditional use permits, hours were put in place by City Council, so, uh, they took that into account and, uh, hours, like I said, were put in. Uh, I appreciate, uh, participation at the workshops. Um, we had the USDA workshops, public workshops last week on Thursday and Friday, and we had really good conversations, I think, so.
Completely forgot about that.
That's okay, next time.
Lynn and I were.
Y'all need to understand, I'm old, y'all need to call or remind me.
It's all right, it's all right.
On the day, right?
Yeah, it worked out well, I think, because we had small, of course, you always want more people, right? But, uh, the amount of people was perfect for the discussion that took place. So I think we had really good results, um, and we'll be relaying that back to everyone uh, and moving forward with that project.
I'd like to make one comment for moving forward on that CUP. I think we all learned something in that in terms of encouraging the applicant to go for the maximum hours so they can change them later.
Sure, yep.
So, yeah, that was, that was information for me that I wouldn't have thought about. I thought we did a really good job, but I can see where we can learn something in that.
What day was what?
Was this workshop.
Oh, third, last Thursday and Friday? It's okay. You would have. You would have been working, yes, it's okay. That's all.
I don't know if anybody stopped to look at the, the, I don't know if there were renderings or actual photos of the interior for that wine, um.
Oh, they're nice.
That place is going to be, that's going to be awesome.
Yes.
I'm thinking about renting a table for an office down there.
For a starting business, it's amazing.
And, uh, we're losing Mr. Davis.
Really?
No.
Where are you going?
He's not going to be able to serve with us anymore, let's just say that, right? So.
Well, thank you for your service.
Yeah.
You were always here when we needed you.
I am, I am going out working, I'm contracted with the city now to do some, some other things, so.
I guess that would be a conflict of interest.
Hey, I don't blame you, I'd step down too if you could make money out of the deal. Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at ten fifty-six AM.